I don't agree.
Well, so actually, I was asking, is, I know they said they could do it, but does, does the vendor want it?
What vendor?
The vendor.
In the operation.
Because they make it like.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I mean.
And it's for?
Yes.
It's, it's their branding, not their.
It is, so, okay, is that what it's for? Christmas city?
Well, it is the Christmas city.
It's just the same money.
No, they don't have to change it with time, like the holiday.
I don't think that's our purpose, or I think it's just for you to win the money or not.
That's all.
So you have to call us the holiday, all-inclusive suiting.
Well, how is it that you don't want to say the name?
Ah geez.
All right, let's call the meeting of county council to order.
You know, a little snowflake.
Uh. Mr. Dietz has the pledge.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Uh, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Kuzic.
President.
Mr. Dietz.
Here.
Mrs. Ferraro, uh, here. Mr. Heckman.
Here.
Mr. Lot.
Here.
Mr. McGee.
Here.
Ms. Bargo Heffner.
Here.
Mr. Warner.
Here.
And Ms. Zirinsky.
Here.
All present except Ms. Ferraro and Mr. Kuzic.
And I'm here. Oh, I'm here.
Better late than never.
Okay, Mrs. Ferraro's here, Mr. Kuzic, Ms. Ferraro, and Mr. Warren.
Warner.
Are participating by phone.
Is it me?
All right. Um. Call for approval of the minutes from November first.
So moved.
Mr. Dietz, second, Ms. Hefner.
I'm supposed to say by acclamation.
Call for voice acclamation, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good, we're done. All right, um, now, what we're gonna do tonight, before I get to Mr. McGee, is, I probably, we're gonna probably move it along. I, it's, the weather's gotten better, I just wanna say, it's changed to sleet and freezing rain, so.
That's awesome.
It's better. Bethlehem Township is, Ms. Zirinsky can tell you, was a parking lot, I've been on it for two hours, I don't like it.
Two and a half.
All right, good for you. But the thing is, uh, and, and, and you know what, I'm glad we're having the meeting, but it's not just us, if we can make it, it's the public and safety, so, in the future, I think we may need to talk about contingency plans if something happens. Uh, I don't really care what our traditions were, that's meaningless to me. Uh, we gotta learn to go with the flow. So anyway, that's all, that's my position. I'll talk about that in the new year, and do a resolution of some sort. Uh.
Oh my god.
Mr. McGee.
Resolution, um, for these appointments, we have an appointment to the housing authority. Becky Ann Bartlett, term to expire, um, February ninth, two thousand twenty-four. And Lehigh Valley Planning Commission Citizen Representative Stephen Melnick, term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. And Personnel Appeals Board, U. Harold Levy, term to expire February third, two thousand and twenty-one. And on the back side here, there's, uh, Workforce Board of Lehigh Valley. Appointment, Private Sector Debbie Rice, term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty. We talked, we, we discussed these appointments last night, and they were moved last night to full council.
We sure did, and we talked a lot about them, and now we have Mr. Levy's first name, so I don't think there should be a problem. So, uh, anyway, can I, uh, we have a vote motion to pass all of them at once?
So moved.
Vote on the resolution.
Vote on the resolution?
Right.
Okay.
All at once?
Yeah, they're all in there.
Yeah.
I didn't know if anybody wanted to break any out, seeing no one making objection, all right, uh, call for the vote.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro. Peg.
I'm here, okay.
Appointments.
Do you say yes or no?
Yes.
Good for you.
Mr. Heckman. Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Ms. Bargo Heffner.
Yes.
Professionalism, please.
Mr. Warner.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
And Mr. Dietz.
Yes.
We got it.
All right, uh, move.
The vote on nine to zero.
It's great. Courtesy of the floor, anyone here to address council, seeing none, we'll go on to the Council, that county executive report, and I think he has something he'd like to talk to us about.
Uh, with all due alacrity, sir, um, items four, five, and six, under old business, there have been some, uh, feed, there has been some feedback from the City of Bethlehem regarding the language contained in the agreements, minor issues, but enough that I would suggest that, um, you have your public hearing and then table these items, so that we can correct the language that's contained therein. Because at the end of the day, both governing bodies, the county and, and the City of Bethlehem's council. What, oh, not six, I'm sorry, four and five?
Just four and five.
Just four and five, okay. Uh, just items four and five. Additionally, that we're waiting for some confirmation from Motorola, that there won't be any additional expenditures related to the consolidation. And once we have that, then the parties can be, uh, can, can be comforted in that there, there won't be any additional monies expended, other than the million three that you're going to pay for the equipment that you're buying. So that's, I, I, I would recommend that, of course, that's up to you, how to, how to proceed. We, uh, if I haven't reported it before, I'm very pleased to report that we received the eighty-eight thousand dollars from the Shrin companies for those three parcels. Uh, I, I appreciate what they did, especially Mr. Jim Shrin, in working with us to get that accomplished, and we're working with them going forward, uh, on an amendment to the MOU, so that we deal with this situation proactively and not have to have contentious negotiations leading up to the payments that are due to us. So we're, we're looking forward to bringing that to you. We were attacked, uh, what, we are attacked generally, um, twenty-seven?
Thousand.
Thousand times a month?
A month.
Yeah, that's our average, so, we are, we suffer twenty-seven thousand cyber attacks a month regularly, and our IT has historically done an excellent job catching them. At election time, we were attacked one point four million times. We had one point four million attempted incursions into our system, they were all caught. That's largely because we block forty-four countries, and the vast majority of the attacks came from the Ukraine, do I have that right? Yep. So, uh, that's what was going on out there in our little county, so imagine.
And that's real news, right?
Yeah, that's real news.
Okay.
Um, so, I thought we'd report that, and, and to our knowledge, all of the incursions were intercepted. I do have some personnel and legal matters I, I would like to brief you on, I'll, I'll do it as quickly as I possibly can, but, um, you're here, and I, I'm not gonna see you again until December, and I, I do need to let you know these things.
You'd like to go to an executive session?
I would, sir.
Um, all right, I suggest we, uh, it is six thirty-eight, and we're, we're going to, uh, an executive session for the stated purpose of.
There's a, a per, there are personnel issues which I need to brief council on, and two legal matters that, that we also need to brief council on.
Personnel issues and.
Legal matters.
A couple of legal matters. Um. Uh, call for a motion to go to executive session?
I'll go for a motion.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Sir.
Mr. Lot, uh, everybody, I don't even know if we need a vote. Voice?
Yep.
Aye.
Aye.
Let's do it, six thirty-eight.
No notes.
No notes.
No notes, no pens, no recording devices, no hidden cameras.
I think they're coming back.
Okay.
Okay. People, who's on here now?
It's John, it's John and, uh, Peg, I think.
Okay.
Peg?
I'm here.
Okay.
I, I don't look at them.
You're annoying, have you noticed? I put out four and five that you need to do it separately, if you're gonna table.
Okay, thank you, um, yeah, no.
PSI, PSSU, HSA.
All right, we're bringing the meeting back to order, uh, at six fifty-six PM, uh, discussion centered around personnel issues and litigation. All right, so, uh, did the county executive have, wait, am I at, was I at you anyway? Let me check, yes, I am.
Uh, I'm, I'm finished, if there are no questions.
I don't have any, I mean.
That's all you got?
All right. I'm here now, I'm fine, I just, people leaving and driving. Um. Okay, so let's go to old business, first item of, uh, on the old business is public hearing on the twenty eighteen budget amendments. Uh, this ordinance was introduced by measures Kuzic and McGee at the November first meeting, and the public hearing debate and possible vote will be held at this meeting. So, now we have the public hearing, see, is anyone out, no one's out there in the public to talk about it, council, discussion? Folks on the phone?
Yep.
Any discussion on, uh, this? Item. All right, hearing nothing on that, uh, we'll move to the vote.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Ms. Bargo Heffner.
Yes.
Mr. Warner.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Dietz.
Yes.
And Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Casted by a vote of nine to zero.
Okay, thank you, um, now we'll have the public hearing on the ordinance to terminate the higher education authority. This ordinance was introduced by Ms. Bargo Heffner and Mr. Kuzic at the November first meeting, and the public hearing, debate, and possible vote will be held at this meeting. Is there anyone in the public who would like to have any, has any questions or comments on this meeting, on this, uh, ordinance, sorry, seeing none? Uh, questions, comments from county council? I did have one question for you, Mr. McClure. Uh, I had a question for you. I believe the House Hospital Authority, well, that's higher education, never mind.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, I'm okay, my, my mistake. All right, Ms. Zumbo, call for the vote.
Ms. Bargo Heffner.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Warner.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Dietz.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
And Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
All right, public hearing on the ordinance to terminate the hospital authority. Uh, this ordinance was introduced by Mr. Kuzic and Ms. Zirinsky at the November first meeting, and the public hearing debate and possible vote will be held at this meeting. Is there anyone from the public who has any questions or comments? Is there anyone from the public who has any questions or comments? Seeing none? Uh, are there any questions or comments from members of council? Now I have my question for Mr. (laugh) um, the hospital authority. My understanding is there's approximately $250,000 to $300,000.
$285,000.
Okay, what happens, it goes to the GPA, but what, how does it count in wise, go?
I don't know that, standing here tonight, the county agrees that it goes to the GPA.
Oh.
Um, however, we'll be making a presentation to the general purpose authority, uh, what our position is with respect to that, and of course, county council, county council can ultimately decide, um, if, let's, let's take a, an example, if the GPA determines, which I do not anticipate, but, you know, you never know, the GPA determines it's theirs, um, county council can choose to tussle with the GPA, or if the county agrees that it's the county's money, um, county council can always give it back to the GPA if it chooses to, so, um...
So, from a legal perspective, once we, uh, once this is terminated, the status of that money is what? Its authority is terminated?
It's with the GP, it's with the general purpose authority.
Why is that?
Because that's...
They absorbed all of it.
Cause they subsumed the two authorities.
Well, it's, it's an evolved, but I wanted to know, go ahead.
I looked into the matter, and essentially, the money is in an account, which is not held on anyone's books, which of course is very problematic.
Yeah.
Yes, it's, it's very problematic, but, I mean, the good news is, um, the current signatories are John Stofa, um, who, who would not go to the bank and take that money out, and, uh, Alicia Carner, who, who, who would not also, so, uh, there's good news there, but we'll, we'll be addressing that once we address with the general purpose authority what their position is, and there, there, there's a great deal to discuss about the money that's there. But ultimately, council will decide whether it wants to tussle with the general purpose authority over the money, or whether, once, uh, we take it back, if we do, council wants to give it back to them, or if council wants to guide us on, uh, what position...
Yeah, I guess that was my, sort of, part of my question, is, is, are you, as the administration, from your end, leaning towards that money should come to the county?
I am not leaning that way.
Oh, okay.
You're leaning which way then?
I'm leaning, uh, to it staying in the general purpose authority, or being properly noted on the general purpose authority books that that money exists, um, that, that's where I'm leaning. There, in all frankness, uh, it depends upon how the general purpose authority's, uh, responds to the fact that there is about $1.2 million that are on the county and general purpose authority books, which Duran Hammond tells me in his view is county money.
Mm-huh.
And what we're going to do about that money, about 900,000 of it is available to come back to the county. Now, the reason there, about 300,000 needs to stay with the general purpose authority is there's a loan out there that needs to be repaid, that that money is backing, so we would need to leave about $300,000 with the general purpose authority to secure that, make sure we get that money back, and if they don't, there, there's that money there to pay.
Um, yeah, and I was just curious, like, status-wise, and you've answered that, um...
That's what I got.
That's good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions? My only concern is since these meetings are now recorded, that Ms. Carner and Mr. Stofa may be on their way to the bank. The weather's cleared up.
Not yet.
There's, I, I don't care what the weather is, neither of them would ever do that.
You have faith in humanity, I like that.
I have faith in those.
Uh-huh. All right, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Ms. Zerinsky?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Heffner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
And Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. All right, next is the, uh, public hearing on the ordinance entitled "An Ordinance of the Northampton County Council Authorizing the County of Northampton, Eastern Pennsylvania to Enter Into a Communication Site Lease Agreement with the City of Bethlehem, Pennsylvania", referred to as a demise premise, premises. Uh, this ordinance was introduced by measures Lot and McGee at the November 1st meeting, and the public hearing debate and possible vote will be held at this meeting. Um, is there any public who showed up for this specifically tonight? Seeing none? Uh, we have any questions or comments? This was one of the issues that the executive had recommended we table. Dietz made a motion to ta, excuse me, to table.
Second.
At, all right, there's no, no discussion, so we'll just go for the vote.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Heffner?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Zerinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
And Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of nine to zero.
Okay, the, um, tabled by a vote of nine to zero.
Tabled by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you, sir. Public hearing on the ordinance entitled "An Ordinance of the Northampton County Council Authorizing the County of Northampton, Eastern Pennsylvania to Enter Into an Agreement of Sale with the City of Bethlehem, Pennsylvania for the Purchase of a Motorola Astro 7.14 Trunk Radio System and Associated Items."
So, we made a motion to table this one, too?
If, this, this ordinance was introduced by Mr. Lot and Ms. Zerinsky at the November 1st meeting, and the public hearing debate and possible vote will be held at this meeting. Um, so, is anyone here from the public who would like to speak to this? Seeing none? Uh, are there any questions or comments? This was one that the executive also wanted to...
Motion to table this resolution.
Okay, there you go.
A motion to table has been made and seconded, no debate, please, uh, call the roll.
Ms. Vargo Heffner?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Zerinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
And Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Motion to table, passed by a vote of nine to zero.
I have a question about point of order. Do, do we have to take it back off the table, or anyone's allowed to take it back off the table?
Anyone in the member of council?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, county council. All right, uh, now we'll move on to number six. Public hearing on the ordinance entitled "An Ordinance of Northampton County Council Authorizing the County of Northampton, Eastern Pennsylvania to Enter Into a Termination of Lease and Services Agreement with St. Luke's Hospital of Greysdale Property, Currently Being Used for Medical Helicopter Services." This was introduced by Ms. Vargo Heffner and Ms. Ferraro at our November 1st meeting, and the public hearing debate and possible vote be held at this meeting. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this? I must say it by law. Uh, seeing none? Uh, ask if there are any questions or comments, I'm asking. Are there any questions or comments from council? Like, we discussed this, the executive had told us about this. No questions, no comments, seeing none? Uh, Ms., uh, Zumbo, call, uh, do the, call for the roll.
Ms. Vargo Heffner?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Ms. Zerinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Is there any other old business to discuss? Old. Seeing no old business, we'll go to new business. Consideration of Matters Related to the 2019 Northampton County Budget. First, we have an introduction of the 2019 Real Estate Millage Rate Ordinance. Uh, is there someone who will sponsor this? Mr. Dietz will sponsor, is there a second sponsor? Mr. McGee? Uh, the public hearing, debate, and possible vote will be held at the December 6th meeting. Um, now we have a public hearing on the proposed 2019 county budget. Is there anyone from the public, comments or questions? Seeing none? Does anyone want to have anything to say on this? I believe, does this be introduced separately, or it's covered under the, this right here? Oh, this is the public hearing?
Yes.
Right, it's public hearing, sorry, I misread that, my fault, my apologies. Any questions or comments? We are now having the public hearing on the 2019 county budget. Anybody on the phone?
Yeah, uh, Ron.
Is that Mr. John, or Bob?
Yeah.
John, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, my, my thoughts are is that, uh, the budget should include, uh, funding for the purchase of voting machines, I think that's a glaring omission, and, uh, I, I think, and I hope that I'll get support on an amendment to do that. Thank you.
Um, all right, you, you are making, uh, you're proposing an amendment? Not at this time?
Not at this time, but I...
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right.
I will submit one.
Okay, I, I apologize, you're right. Um, my mind is still somewhere on Eastern Avenue, I think, I have to try and bring it all back. Anyway, okay, uh, anyone else? Anyone else? All right. Public hearing on the proposed 2019 Northampton County Capital Improvements Plan. Is there anyone from the public who has any questions or comments? Seeing none? Uh, anyone on council want to speak to this at all? All right, yeah, okay, seeing none? Excuse me, we'll move on to item number two. Introduction of Magisterial District Justice Lease Ordnances. Uh, let's do...
It's an introduction, right?
Yeah.
I'll introduce it.
All right, Magisterial District Justice, uh, 3104. Uh, you want to introduce that?
Do they have to be separate, or together?
Separate.
Okay, I'll introduce the first one.
All right. Is there a second sponsor? Matt, thank you, Matt. All right, public hearing debate and possible vote will be held at December 6th meeting. Now we'll move to Magisterial District Justice 324.
I'll introduce that one, too.
Okay, do we have a second? Ms. Zerinsky? Public hearing debate and possible vote will be held at the December 6th meeting. Now we'll go to Magisterial District Justice 3212. Is there a sponsor?
A sponsor?
Ms. Zerinsky is the sponsor.
I'll co-sponsor.
Ms. Heffner wants to be the second sponsor. Public hearing debate and possible vote will be held at the December 6th, 2018 meeting. Very good, blue wave. All right. Consideration of Court Fees Resolution, number three. We need someone to introduce the resolution, is there anyone who'd like to introduce this? This was part of our discussion we had, maybe?
I'll introduce it.
Let me see, what?
Your finance?
Oh, all right, I'll introduce the resolution on finance. Um, all right, is there any discussion?
Wait, I'm confused.
Um, yesterday, at the Finance Committee meeting, we had a discussion regarding, uh, the, uh, court fees. The re, uh...
All right.
You have it in your packet.
No, it's, that's why I'm confused, it doesn't need to be introduced, does it? It's already here.
No, he has introduced the resolution. We need a sponsor of the resolution, and it's gonna be wrong.
I'm, I'm sponsoring it, so now we're having, does anyone want to talk about this, uh, resolution? Ms. Zerinsky?
When it says charged by agencies and offices, is that all the agencies and offices within Northampton County are under our purview, or just the courts?
Yes.
So, like, the conservation district fees?
Yeah, this came up, Mr., I'm sorry.
So, so this is, uh, a court administration function, not an administrative function, but I think I understand, uh, the process well enough to say that these, these are the fees that are instituted for purposes of the court system itself.
So, for the courts?
Yes, just, just the courts.
But it's not conservation districts, or anything else?
You sue somebody, that's what it'll cost.
And if I'm not mistaken, you have a Supreme Court of Pennsylvania, I think that's what this one refers to in our packet, where they ordered, uh, these, these fees, um, and...
Okay.
I would suggest that we pass them.
No, they administer, the Supreme Court administers all of the courts of Pennsylvania, and they, and they promulgate the fees, and you, you, it's essentially a ministerial function to approve them.
As I said...
You don't really have a choice.
As I said at committee meeting...
So, it's mandatory, you just gotta do it.
Well, you can fight the Supreme Court if you want to, Pennsylvania.
No, I'm okay with that.
You can litigate the issue, but I, I wouldn't.
It'll help you in the future with environmental lawsuits. All right, I'm...
Really?
I'm ju, no, I'm being very sarcastic. Okay, uh, is there any other discussion on the, uh, on this?
No.
Okay, uh, would you please call for the vote?
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Hank?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Heffner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
And Ms. Zerinsky?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Um, we're all having fun, Ms. Zerinsky, it's one of those nights. Okay, number four, Consideration of Personnel Request Resolution, um, from Court Administration. Mr. McGee, would you please introduce the resolution?
Mr. President, before he, well, can I, we have discussion after he introduces?
Yeah.
Sorry, go ahead.
That, uh, this was, uh, covered?
I got it, apparently I'm gonna have to read the whole thing because, um, there's nowhere else, so... It is, it is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that one full-time position of Deputy Director of Operations, Pay Grade CS-37G, Salary $84,366, shall be eliminated in the Department of Court Administration's Juvenile Justice Center, effective November 15th, 2018. It is further resolved by the Northampton County Council that one full-time position of Juvenile Assistant Deputy Director of Detention and Quality Assurance, Pay Grade CS-271A, Salary of $56,427, shall be created in the Department of Court Administration. Juvenile Justice Center, effective November 15th, 2018. It is further resolved by the Northampton County Council that one full-time position of Assistant Director of Treatment, Pay Grade CS-272B, Salary $58,966, shall be eliminated in the Department of Court Administration. Juvenile Justice Center, effective November 15th, 2018. It is further resolved by the Northampton County Council that one full-time position of Juvenile Center Clinical Director, Pay Grade CS-20, 292B, Salary $64,652, shall be created in the Department of Court Administration. Juvenile Justice Center, effective November 15th, 2018. Further resolved by the Northampton County Council that one full-time position of Law Clerk, Problem-Solving Courts Coordinator, Pay Grade of CE-4, 4D, Salary $81,056, shall be eliminated in the Department of Court Administration, effective November 15th, 2018. Further resolved by the Northampton County Council that one full-time position of Law, Law Clerk, Pay Grade CE-31A, Salary $59,084, shall be created in the Department of Court Administration, effective November 15th, 2018. Further resolved by the Northampton County Council that one full-time position of Clerical Technician III, Pay Grade CN-151A, Salary $28,105, shall be created in the Department of Court Administration, Adult Probation, effective November 15th, 2018. And we went over this last night, I'm so moved.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Heffner?
I'd like to call people's attention to the fourth paragraph, the position of Juvenile Center Clinical Director, Pay Grade, et cetera. I'd like to, um, make a motion that that be removed from this, and that we vote on that separately from the other positions.
I will second that.
Uh-huh, we have a motion. There's gonna be a motion by Ms. Heffner, seconded by Ms. Zerinsky, to take out paragraph four. It is further resolved by Northampton County Council that one full-time position of Juvenile Center Clinical Director, Pay Grade CS-292B, Salary $64,652, shall be created in the Department of Court Administration, Juvenile Justice Center, effective November 15th, 2018. I just wanted to read that, so we were all on the same page. Is there any...
I have one more, uh, comment. Are these positions already going to be filled by people who are within the county? Like, they're just moving?
Some, some are.
Bill, go ahead, you got...
He mentioned last night, there was a few, I think, that were, but there was one or two, I think, that, um, if anybody else can remember, but...
And what's happening to the people whose positions are being eliminated?
I think they're moving in.
Yeah, there's some that are moving in. There, there, actually, there's a retirement, too, here.
There's retirement.
There was one of the larger salaries is a retirement, which they were happy about. One of the larger salaries is a retirement, which they were happy about.
Excuse me. Before we have the discussion, again, let's vote on the motion that you both, you made and seconded, and then we can have any discussion you want to have. So we're voting on the motion to remove this.
For the amendment.
For the amendment. That's the amendment. To call the roll in the Senate.
Ms. Vargo-Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Zarinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Warner.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick.
Present.
Mr. Dietz.
Yes.
And Ms. Ferraro.
Yes.
All right. So, I'm sorry, continue whatever discussion you're going to have. It's now been introduced properly.
Passes by a vote of eight to zero with one present.
All right. So as far as discussion goes...
Do you want to, what's the point of order? Do you vote on the other ones first and then discuss this or how do you proceed?
You can have the discussion on both.
If I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
The amendment has removed paragraph four.
Right.
You are now considering the ordinance as amended.
All right. And I guess the question then is, can anybody discuss the part that was moved out until we have the actual...
Each councilperson has that right to explain their position and their vote and the consideration of the amended ordinance.
Thank you. All right, so let's go. We're going to now discuss the amended resolution. As amended, it's the same except we have paragraph four no longer there. Is there any discussion? Mr. McGee.
All I can say is I understand Lori's position on this and I agree with it. There was a lot, I mean, they did a great job in presenting and I know they're doing a great job of what they do, but it was a lot, it was a lot for us to, they still have their ball of wax here that they can run with. It's just carving out one piece, so that's all I have to say.
Is there anything else? I mean, on this particular...
I have no objection to the others that I left in because obviously we have a law clerk. It's a change of a title, but this director of clinical services or clinical director, I just think there needs to be more information. I read a little bit of the job description. I think we all should have a chance to look at the job description because not everybody had a copy of it and it just, I just feel like there's a slippery slope of calling justice treatment and where's treatment and where's criminal justice and where are the lines. So I'd like to learn more about it before I endorse that position. And from a clinical standpoint, a director position should be someone with much more than five years of experience and I think that was the, they had a LSW instead of an LCSW and I think you should have a certain clinical standard to have this level of a position. So that's where I'm coming from.
Does the salary being offered fit that?
It may or may not, but again, I think I need to know more about what they're talking about. He talked about adding a drug and alcohol component. I think there needs to be a greater presentation on that because it was like, you know, we're doing this, we're doing that, and it was sleight of hand. I want to see what this is really about before we say yes or no to that.
So you just want more clarity?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right. I would guess that you could have everything in line for the next council meeting and then we'll be able to address it at that meeting.
That would be on the 6th. Do you want to do it then?
Going to do it the 6th of the following Thursday. I mean, I don't think they want to wait. I mean, I think we should do it on the 6th.
The 6th?
I mean, it's up to them to present.
Yeah, I mean...
It's up to them to make the case.
Well, Linda, I want to be able to have her give them a date and I would say, what, can we give them the date of the first meeting in December?
I'm not sure how I feel about, I know Mr. Kuzick brought up the idea that why wasn't this put in the budget itself and so, like, I'm wondering why it's coming up at this point and just so quickly. And if it's really important and they really want to come and present again, then that's fine, but, I mean...
I mean, you know, I understand because you're coming at it from a specific position. These are your background and experience. I would think they said, they gave their rationale why they didn't get it into the budget. I think going forward in the future with future budgets, you'll probably find now and then, and every council member can act their own way, you will get maybe last-minute type of things that can come from, oh, let's say the courts or somebody else. And then it's council, every council member's decision on how they want to handle it. So it's my position that we should invite them to come and present and they can pick either December meeting if that pleases the rest of council. I don't think this should linger until next year. I don't want to create a hardship over there either.
If I may, I would agree that they could make the presentation and, you know, we can decide then, yes or no to it, you know, but I definitely have no problem with them, giving them either one of those dates that they could do to present it, to make their case.
Yeah, you have very specific questions or concerns and I think they should be able to come in and answer them. I don't think that's...
I defer to your expertise in how the budget meetings are handled because I don't know if both meetings will be filled or not. So whatever you guys decide, I just want it to be examined more closely.
Well, it's the county council meeting and, I mean, the first one's going to be active, but, I mean, there's always room. I mean, it's one paragraph, as you said. It's a position, so they don't have to come in and reintroduce everything or we push it. So you want him to come in and speak to the issue of the full-time position of juvenile center clinical director and you have some specific questions. Now, you could forward those questions to him in advance via memo with Mazembo and give him the opportunity to work on them and then he'll come in and he can address that. It does then give him a jump on knowing exactly what it is we're looking for or you'd like. Is that acceptable?
Yes.
All right. So now it's just a matter of which meeting. Do you want to do it, I think both meetings might have a full agenda, so it's a toss-up on whether you want to have the first December meeting or the second. Just a hunch.
Just, I mean, would it matter? I mean, if both are open to us, one may not work for them, so I mean...
I would, I would again go back to what I had originally said, which was Mazembo can send this on to him and ask at their, which meeting would work for them. Because, I mean, we don't have to give the answers. We just gave questions. You have questions, whoever might ask questions on this. They've got to come up with the criteria. Does that satisfy you?
Yes.
Minister of Assembly. All right, so let's do that then. So you're going to send, you'll speak with Ms. Hefner. She'll give you questions. It'll be forwarded to Jermaine and asking them with that which meeting would work for them. All right. I think that took care of that.
Thank you.
And I think we can now move to, I'm sorry, I thought, vote on the amended resolution.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Dietz.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro. Okay?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo-Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Warner.
Yes.
Ms. Zarinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick.
Yes.
Passes by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. My heart and my brain in San Benet, Bethel Township. Okay. Anyway, now we'll move on to number five, and that is the Consideration of a Community Investment Partnership Program Grant, First United Church of Christ Resolution. Mr. McGee, you had moved to have this broken out from the full SIP count, so would you introduce the resolution?
Now, therefore be resolved by the Council of County of Northampton. Northampton County Council hereby approves First United Church of Christ 2018 SIP application not to exceed $20,000 that will be used to pay costs associated with rehabilitation and restoration of a church steeple. The county executive of the County of Northampton is authorized to execute grant agreements with the applicants not to exceed the approved amount for each grant. She'll move.
Thank you, Mr. McGee. This had an extensive discussion yesterday. Are there any other questions or discussions regarding this grant? Mr. Dietz.
I know, I called in yesterday in support of it. I had made quite a few phone calls today, including former councilmembers just kind of picking their brain and I think that I'm more inclined to agree with you of voting against it on the slippery slope and the, you know, what it potentially could open the county for going forward. So I personally think it's, you know, on a personal level, I think it is a good project and unfortunately not here, I was going to tell them that. I personally will make a contribution to restoring it, but I do think maybe it may not be the best use of the grant through the county.
Thank you, Mr. Dietz. Ms. Zarinsky.
I also did some additional research and in addition to the email that I sent everybody on my concerns about it, I also know that there is a, an issue that went to, from Morris County that went to the Supreme Court in New Jersey that stated that they ruled that taxpayer money cannot be used for church choir projects that support religious activities. So if there's an active church, which this is an active congregation, the money could not be used towards that. And it was challenged and the ruling also stated that future grants to churches would be prohibited. Now, I understand that this designation for this building is on the National Register for Easton as a historic district and although I am not in favor of this, I would recommend that the church establish its own historic preservation fund as something in their own personal budget that they contribute to and then apply for this grant. Because I was looking through the list of grants that I saw and Moravian has a historic, Moravian Historical Society. If you established a First United Church of Christ Historical Society, I think that I would be more inclined to say that this grant could go towards the historic preservation of the building because I still have the concern that the congregation should support their church and their capital campaigns with congregation funds. Over the years, it doesn't seem that their operational costs have included anything more than their salaries. And I think that if you know that you have a historic building, that you also have to save over time for the preservation of that building. So I will be voting no as well.
And yesterday, there was a great deal of discussion, I said, and some of that did go about segregated funds from their end, but, you know, and you're right, though, in the sense that your concern was talked about, yes.
Right. I just think that it opens us up for a lawsuit. I mean, the lawsuit in New Jersey was by the Freedom from Religion validation and then the ACLU came in, too. So I think that for a $20,000 grant, that we shouldn't incur the cost of a potential lawsuit and that if they could file differently at another point in time, that that would be beneficial for them.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to have any, Ms. Hefner?
This grant money comes from what source? The pool of money that we're picking from?
Are you getting biblical here or?
I'm not going back to Adam, but...
I mean, are we, are you getting the casting of lots because it comes from table games money?
There you go.
Okay, so...
So it's not technically county money, per se?
Oh, well, yes, it is. I mean, the statute assigns that revenue.
To us.
To us. So, yeah, it's county money.
Also, the facade grant here, sorry, in the program guidelines, it did state that grants for the exterior building improvements targeted downtown or neighborhood, blah, 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 blah. Facade grant limit is $10,000 per property. So I don't even understand how they can ask for $20,000 if it says here that the limit is $10,000 and they have to have matching dollar for dollar. I think they said they had $10,000, right?
I don't recall what they had.
And that's all that they had. I know, they don't have $20,000.
It's not a facade.
I thought the argument...
Hey, Ron? I'm sorry. Yeah, I'll get to you. I just, Tara, are you, I mean, Lori had the floor and I will get to you.
No, he answered my question. Thank you.
Mr. McClure answered your question. Tara, do you have anything to add to your statement?
Are you telling me that it's not a facade?
It's not.
He's telling you they applied through it, calling it a different thing.
They applied as a capital improvement grant?
Yes.
Okay.
Was that Bob?
No, it's John Kuzick.
John, go ahead.
Yeah, based on this discussion, I think it's probably in our best interest to move to table. So I'd like to make that motion to table the resolution.
You're second to table.
Yeah, second.
All right. We got, you know who the table moved and seconded? All right, we will now have a vote on the motion to table.
Mr. Kuzick.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo-Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Warner.
Yes.
Ms. Zarinsky.
No.
Mr. Dietz.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
And Mr. Heckman.
No.
Motion passes by a vote of seven to two.
All right. It's tabled and will be brought up again. We'll see. Some things I think, Mr. McClure can speak to this, things I think have died on the table over the years. We'll see.
Just a...
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Dietz.
Quick question on the structure. So now if it was tabled and there were $20,000 allocated, kind of for that in the budget, what happens?
It's in the budget. If you pass the budget, it's in the budget.
So I know I...
Do you think we apply for it?
Sometimes people don't use their money, so it just, it'll go into next year. Like, say, if somebody gets a grant.
But they're getting the money. If you pass the budget, they're getting the $20,000.
If you pass the budget with the grant in the budget, they're getting the money.
But I thought we removed it and so it wasn't voted on to give to them.
It's still part of the budget.
Wow.
Wait a second. So, so we removed it from voting on those SIP grants, but we did not remove it from the budget, so it's still in the budget, so they're going to get it anyway?
We have the budget. We still have the budget yet to...
So we would have to make a budget amendment to remove that from the budget. Can we do that now? Can I make a motion to do that now?
During the budget amendment meeting.
During the budget amendment meeting. So we got to put a little sticky note there and like, remember that.
By November 30th, for all the amendments.
It's been a while for me, but I think that, yeah, I mean, Mr. McClure is making the point that even though we took this out to vote on separately, that in and of itself doesn't necessarily relate to the actual budget, which we will be passing. And I don't know, council, you can take the money. We can move around money, but Durant should explain, though, that has, that can be problematic, too, if our council gets wild about what they want to do with money in a budget. But nonetheless, yeah, I mean, certainly, councils passes a budget, so this can be done, but it's not done now.
And by deleting it, you instruct us, it's not there. It won't be there. But if you don't, it will be there and we will, based on the recommendations of the committee, execute.
Mr. President, you can also untable it at this meeting, too.
Yes.
You can, right?
Yes, you can.
You can. Okay. Just bringing up a point.
Absolutely.
Oh, wait a second. Let me just understand this. So if we voted on this resolution today and we voted that they did not get the money.
That's correct.
And it's still in the budget, would they get it anyway? Even if we voted on this resolution?
Mr. Kuzick, did you want to chime in?
I would...
I heard you say no, I thought.
I would recommend during the budget process that, that an amendment be offered to remove this and it can be placed under what's called future grants and that would allow it to be reprogrammed.
And that's what I was saying before. I think what Mr. Kuzick's saying, we have to literally remove it. Now, whether you want to put it under future grants or say, I don't know. I mean, if I may, Ms. Hefner?
Yes.
You, how much money was totally there that you had the chance to appropriate?
$800,000.
No, I thought it was, you didn't appropriate all the money you got.
Almost.
Almost all. $500 and change, maybe, not...
What about the money that, if I may, what about the money that wasn't appropriated? What happens to that at the end of the year?
Is this a quiz?
Oh, no, no, it's not a quiz. Mr. Barron.
I just, I'm not committing.
We don't want to fall into a rabbit hole, so...
It stays in a fund balance. It rolls into future grants and it can be awarded in other budget years. It doesn't disappear because it is for those specific types of programs under the law that governs the revenue generated from table games.
So basically, you're taking it out of this budget for them and it goes into their pot and that is a rollover. And that's what I was wondering. It rolls over, as he's saying. So in the future, you can give it to them, I guess, but I would say you'd have to totally, they'd have to maybe reapply, but that would be my thing in a new year. The money's, the money stays with the county in the sense that it stays with the SIP grant, like the money, whatever amount was left over. So it's not like it goes away. Are we all, do we all understand it or do we need Mr. Money, Barron, to explain to us some more? Barron, you like to be part of our discussion, so I'm giving you a chance. So, I mean, is there any questions for Mr. Barron? So, I mean, is there any questions for Mr. Barron, or, because I want to make sure everybody's clear on this process going into the budget and budget amendments and whatnot?
Question. So we tabled the resolution for the $20,000. I guess the question would be, do we have to bring that back off the table, and then how do we deal with it on the budget?
So, so there, if you, this is a resolution. If you pass a budget, which is an ordinance, and this is in the budget, you are legally authorizing the county executive to execute that budget, which means he could spend it. Now, you could voice your opinion in a resolution, not to suppose what council would do, and say, yes, we want to do that. It could sit in future grants. You could pull it out of the budget completely and put a pin in it for maybe a budget amendment in the future. There's, the options are limitless, and you are the governing body in Northampton County.
Can I ask a question?
Go right ahead.
So if we take this money out of the budget for the SIP grant, we could reallocate it for a future grant that might be under a different name, or it has to be under SIP grants?
It would, it would stay in that pool of money. It would be put in that pool of money, and it would be for future grants or whatever. The 20,000 would be there, as long as you didn't allocate it for some other program, it will be there until you decide whatever you want to do with it. It could be $20,000 for that historical society you talked about, or it could be to save the animals of the main society, whatever you want to do with it.
Right. I just think that this would be disentangled if they would reapply for the grant under a separate historical organization.
There's application dates.
Well, that's up to them.
There are, yes.
Right.
There is, there is a process to get this money, but...
It's gonna come around again next year.
Yes.
And they're not gonna do, they're not gonna raise all that money within a year, right? Maybe? Maybe they will.
They're gonna take a loan to do it, so it was gonna be done right now. This was going to secure the funding to the drive. They were gonna take a loan to get it, so they were gonna have it done right away.
If I may, the fundamental question in front of us is this. We've already moved, it's been tabled. This is sitting to the side. Having said that, it's still in the budget. So council's options going forward are, one, you can untable it right now, and you can vote on it again. Having said that, if it gets an overall yes vote, no foul, no harm, no foul, it moves along. The problem would be if it gets a no vote, as Mr. McClure said, then we would have to make an adjustment. It's not a problem. We'd have to be sure, though, we adjusted for that before we end up sealing the budget for next year.
Right.
So...
But even if we table it indefinitely, we'd have to amend the budget, or it would be by default...
It's almost like, it's two separate issues.
Yes.
For all intents and purposes. The money, you're saying you're not getting this money, according to the table. The administration, this is sort of like if we don't vote on a budget, and what he can do next year. We're not telling him, we passed a resolution. He could decide, like you said, it's in the budget. He could hold it possibly. Whether he would do that or not, that's the administration's call. So, I mean, so if you want to make an action, though, as part of council, you've got to tie it up before the end of the year in terms of saying, we're going to, I'm going to offer a budget amendment, which says I want to reduce the budget in this area of this SIP grant by $20,000. And as Mr. Barron said, then that goes away from them, and it goes into their, can I call it their general fund?
Future.
This is why I, oh, I love the murky world of economic development and grants. Oh, I love it. Anyway, so, you know how much I love, yes, go ahead, and I worked with you.
So in conclusion, and by tabling it, it really didn't solve the problem.
No.
I mean, it was a good suggestion because it, but it didn't, not all the way solved.
Did it solve your ultimate problem if you want to get it out of the budget? No.
No, so we have to make an amendment to remove from the budget.
So, I mean, you could leave it tabled for now. We don't need to do, have any more discussion. I would suggest if you want it out of the budget, and then deal with it next year, however you want to deal with that grant, maybe, you know, they'll get new ones, and that'll be part of whatever fund, let's say Ms. Hefner's involved with, you have to have a budget amendment ready. So, Ms. Zembow would be happy to work with you on a budget amendment.
Yes. And I will work with you on this.
So are we...
And one last comment.
Yes.
I do, I do want to say that it's, it's a lot of work that, that Ms. Fargo-Hefner put in, and also Mr. Kraft was on there, and it's, it's a whole day.
Yes, I spoke with Mr. Kraft.
And the Economic Development Committee. So I think they did a great job in, in putting all the money in, in all the different places that they could.
Ms. Hefner?
I guess my concern is, in the future, to avoid this, if they're gonna write grant proposal guidelines, and if we're not gonna accept entities of religious denominations, then that probably should be very clearly stated, because if it's not clearly stated, then we invite them to do so. And so I guess that decision needs to be made, I would say, prior to the grant being sent out to people to apply.
I think we could make a resolution on that, too.
Well, my only concern about that is, just for example...
Go ahead.
Sorry.
No, go ahead, Matt.
My church last year applied for it. Now, it went, nothing to the structure of the church, nothing to the building, it went to the backpack drive. So, you know, if you did write some verbiage to preclude, you know, a religious facility, you'd have to do it in such, you know...
But that, for the Supreme Court ruling, they said that the money could not be used for church repair projects. Backpacks are not part of church repairs, so that if you specified exactly what the church could use it, a church could apply for, like, a soup kitchen or something like that.
Ms. Zirinsky, and that was discussed, and I, and that is the quintessential question, that council members, that's why you are elected in the vote. This has nothing to do with the qualifications or the ability of the committee that was put together. Lord knows, I don't know how many committee majority decisions I was on that got to council, and people said, that's the dumbest thing I ever heard of. So there was no gentleness involved. The thing is, absolutely, these people gave hard work, and they did. And they used their judgment on what should be and what shouldn't. They also go off of what they're told. And how this group came to get a grant or make an application, God only knows, since it's a religious group, I guess. But the thing is, that being said, it got to this point, but council now, ultimately, it doesn't matter what any committee or group does, you as an individual council member have to decide. Is it, yes, this is something you can do. Is it something you should do? They've made their decisions. Now it's up to you. If you think this is worthy, if you think this met the criteria, and the committee did their due diligence, and you think they did it effectively for this, and you have no problem, then, then vote yes on it. If you think that it's one of those, I don't think we should do this, you vote no. It has, to me, it has nothing to do with personalities. It has absolutely nothing to do with individuals. It has to do with you as an elected official. You're gonna get many grants, many ordinances, many resolutions. You're gonna have to decide for you, is this something you can support. Mr. McClure?
Thank you for recognizing me, Mr. President, because I have no right to stand here and speak, so I appreciate the courtesy. So I don't think there's any distinction between the support of the physical plant of the church if it doesn't have a specifically religious purpose in backpacks. So, I mean, I think you need to have, if you're going to base your decisions upon the jurisprudence regarding the First Amendment, I think, I think you needed a solid opinion from your solicitor in that regard. I don't think there's a distinction. I don't think the law...
You don't think there's a distinction between capital projects and backpacks?
I do not. In the law, I do not. So I, and I...
But the Supreme Court of New Jersey made that distinction.
Well, we're not bound by the Supreme Court of New Jersey.
No, we're not.
We're bound by the Supreme Court of Pennsylvania and the Supreme Court of the United States. And I would just, my point to you is, is just simply, if you're going to base your decisions on the law, you have to know what the law is in, in Pennsylvania and, of course, the United States. So I, I don't think there's a distinction. I don't. And I think, I think you need to be very careful about that. And the reason I'm speaking is, we don't want to create over this one SIP grant a whole bunch of potentially problematic precedents for ourselves moving forward into the future. I mean, for example, tonight in the Human Services meeting, we heard Ms. Wanda Loski talk about how we're partnering with the Conference of Churches to do rapid rehousing. So there, there are instances...
But that's the work of the church. That's not the Capitol building. And those conferences of churches, I just think there's a distinction...
We're paying, we're paying, so we're paying people's rent first month of rapid rehousing. I mean, I don't see a distinction.
May I say something?
Who's that? Bob?
Yes.
Go ahead, Bob.
I want to thank Mr. McClure for speaking up. I appreciate that. And I respect Tara's opinions. I just want to be clear on this, that the SIP program was set up specifically with guidelines. The guidelines were followed by those people that we put on those committees. This council has chosen to table this. The only thing that's left, that there is some concern of lawsuit and/or further dispute, that, that someone has, will come with an amendment to defund the program from this offering. And I think that's, that was made clear in the beginning. So I don't think we have to beat this into a dead horse. I believe there's a clear distinction in what was done by, by Mr. Spadoni. He cleared the board with his, his information. I believe there's a lot of thoughts and processes out there that don't pertain to Pennsylvania. And I believe that Lori and Ken did a good job, and that committee did a good job of vetting everything. So I've gone along with tabling it because I want to see where this ends up myself now. And I do believe that if someone wants to defund this program based on concerns that may not be based on the law or the facts, that, that can be done. I've said my piece.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and really, I mean, I thank Mr., thank Mr. Spadoni for his, which he basically said, he doesn't see anything that says you can't do it, doesn't see anything necessarily that says you can. It's up to council whether they want to do it or not. Sure, go ahead. I mean, the law, at the end of the day, is the last judge that hears something, so...
Well, I should say, when I was tasked with this, that, first of all, I recognize the efforts of the members of council and of the committee. I would also recognize the members of the staff. Mr. Hartley, who I spoke to, who was very open about the documents that I reviewed and what I looked at. And I stand behind my opinion that if, and I echo the vice chairman's comments, if you want to do this, you can do that. Doesn't say you must do it, but you are allowed to do it, if you will, under the test that I have put in my opinion letter. I have looked at the United States Supreme Court cases as to the separation, whether it be the Establishment Clause, the separation of church and state, and all of that, and there appears to be a litmus test, which I applied to the facts and circumstances that I obtained as a result of the job given to me by council, and I stand behind that opinion.
And, yes, thank you, Mr. Solis. So, I mean, there you go. So, I mean, yeah, legally, sure. And also, lawsuits? You'll be surprised how many lawsuits you're probably gonna get over the next few years. Any decision we make up here can be sued. We have law school graduates prominently sitting in front of us, and we have Mr. Spadoni, and I think they could tell you, if you put five lawyers in a room, you'd probably get at least three different legal opinions.
Maybe six.
Maybe six. That's an old joke. I wasn't gonna go there, but you're a lawyer, so you can go there. So the thing is, so, I mean, for me, it's not so much, will we get sued? I think we, we may very well get sued over this. I don't see this as a community-oriented thing. I think if the SIP makes it that way, I think the SIP is flawed. But again, that's not the members. If they're going by what the SIP says to do, they're going by what the, look, when the table games, when the first slots first came out, one of the ways they sold it was, they said it'll get rid of your personal, your school taxes. And we'll never go from that to, to table games. Well, you know where we are now. So laws, you know, whatever. I'm, I'm coming from a county's perspective. I made it clear the other day.
Mr. Heckman?
Let me finish, and I'll gladly let you speak. I just, I'm not saying it's illegal. I didn't even say that yesterday. It's a fact it probably is legal. It may very well withstand the challenge if somebody wants, I'm not gonna challenge the darn thing. I don't have an open pocketbook. But I'm not saying if somebody challenged it, they'd win. Maybe they'd lose. Maybe no one will ever challenge it. I can't vote for it based on my feelings about this specific grant. That's all. I, I just think it's a bad move regardless of the requirements of the SIP. And as a councilman, I have that right. And people can take it from there. Mr. Warner, please.
I, I, I just want to interject that I sat on the SIP programs for over five years. I've watched the guidelines that they use. I went through all the seven different divisions. And I, I don't know your experience with sitting in on the SIP programs or being involved in these programs, because I don't know your background. But I will tell you that being there, I know Lori and Ken did, I know what that committee did, I know what Mark Hartney did, and I respect what they do. And I also respect what Mr. Spadoni did by looking at division of church and state. I understand those things. I just think that there was a great effort to, to show that there was a separation between what they were trying to do with this church's people versus a religious aspect. That's all.
Okay, fine. So is there any other, are there any other statements? Any questions? As of now, this has been tabled. We don't have any motion to pull it off the table? Fine. If, in fact, you wish to get it out of the budget, a budget amendment must be prepared to present when we do that. Everybody clear? Crystal. Okay. Now, let's move on to number six. Consideration of the 2018 City Revitalization Block Grant, City of Bethlehem Resolution. Mr. McGee, would you please introduce the resolution?
Now therefore be it resolved by the county, Council of the County of Northampton, Northampton County Council hereby approves the City of Bethlehem's proposal not to exceed $100,000 that will be used to pay costs associated with the city's business development and retention efforts. The county executive of the County of Northampton is authorized to execute grant agreements with the applicants not to exceed the approved amount using Northampton County's local share table game revenues. So moved.
Thank you. All right. Do we have a discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Zembow, call for the vote.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lott?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
No.
Mr. Dietz?
No.
And Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of seven to two.[1645.23]
Thank you. All right, so now let's move on to the consideration of Sheriff's Fees Resolution. You have the resolution in front of you. Has to be introduced. I don't know, I will introduce it. Northampton County Ordinance Number 1779. Well, here's what we're going to do. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved by Northampton County Council that the sheriff's fees schedule shall be amended as attached. Are you all of the attachment? It is further resolved, any other fees schedule inconsistent herewith is hereby repealed. This was discussed yesterday at the Finance Committee meeting. You can see the fees. The sheriff is here at the meeting. If there are any questions or discussion, anybody? Seeing none, Ms. Zembow, let's call for the vote.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Law.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Warner.
Yes.
Ms. Zarinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mr. Dietz.
Yes.
And Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Passes by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Number eight. Consideration of the 2019 Greysdale Private Pay Rate Resolution. Ms. Heffner, would you please introduce this?
Resolved by Northampton County Council that effective January 1, 2019, the Greysdale Private Pay Rate shall be $340 per day for a semi-private room, $350 per day for a private room, and $550 per day for a short-term rehabilitation room.
Thank you. This was discussed yesterday as well, and it's actually something that happens on a consistent basis as the years roll by to maximize our private pay rates. Are there any questions or concerns or discussion? None? All right, Ms. Zembow, call for the vote.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Warner.
Yes.
Ms. Zarinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mr. Dietz.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Law.
Yes.
Passes by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Now, number nine. Consideration of a resolution accepting a monetary donation from Friends of Greysdale. Ms. Heffner, would you please?
Now therefore be it resolved by the Northampton County Council that it does hereby authorize the county executive to accept on behalf of Greysdale the donation of $2,000 to be used by the Volunteer Office of Greysdale for quality-of-life expenses for the residents.
All right. I think this is one we'll probably all agree on. Is there any discussion or questions regarding this? Seeing none, Ms. Zembow, call for the vote.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Warner.
Yes.
Ms. Zarinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mr. Dietz.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Law.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Passes by a vote of nine to zero.
Sounds like Mr. Kuzic's falling down on a hole. Anyway, it just seemed like you're drifting, your wavelength was drifting down a bit. All right, now we'll move on. Consideration of a resolution, right, did we do Senior Community Center?
No, that's the next one.
And that's what we're going to do. Consideration of Pennsylvania Senior Community Center Grant Program Resolution. Ms. Heffner.
Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of Northampton County that, number one, the approval is given to apply for a grant from the PA Department of Aging, fiscal year 1819, Pennsylvania Senior Community Center Grant Program not to exceed the amount of $150,000. Two, that the county executive and DHS are authorized to execute and file the application and provide any assurances and/or certifications or additional documents that may be requested.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this? Questions? Seeing none, Ms. Zembow.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Warner.
Yes.
Ms. Zarinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mr. Dietz.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Law.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Passes by a vote of nine to zero.
All right. Number 11. Consideration of a resolution placing the spotted lanternfly on the National Invasive Species List. Ms. Zarinsky, would you please introduce this resolution?
Now therefore be it resolved, the Northampton County Council urgently requests the spotted lanternfly be immediately placed on the National Invasive Species List and further supports any and all programs on the state, national, and local level for the eradication of the spotted lanternfly.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this?
There's a comment. You know, it really is up to the citizens, I mean, to get rid of this stuff. And I don't, I mean, it's, I sat through the county of government, I wasn't at the, they put a presentation on, but the county government put a presentation on too, Penn State did. And, you know, I had assumed there was people in place that are, you know, it's not, there's, it's going to be up to the community to get rid of it.
There's not enough boots on the ground to really do it.
Right.
But we have to monitor it and try to contain it. That's the whole thing. When it came out in Berks, they didn't really contain it exactly. It spread a lot, and it spreads on cars when you're moving around and things like that. So it is, it is difficult, but I know that Sharon, when she discussed this at the Open Space Meeting, said that they have some funds where we can do things on local levels. There's some species now that have been identified as natural predators, so we can introduce them. We could also, part of it is getting another person in place so that they can help the agency with all these projects. And so there's a lot of things that we could do on the local level. We just want to get this on the national registry to alert the rest of the country that this is here and they need to do something about it so that they can be on the front end of it instead of the back end.
Anybody else? Sounds good.
Mr. Heckman.
I'm sorry, I, Bob?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Bob.
Man, it's okay. Just a question. Where is Penn State Extension on this right now? Where's their involvement?
Ms. Zarinsky.
They have, they have some funding, and they've identified some ways that they can help. They started passing out these cards to the public. They're, they look like credit cards, but you're, they're meant to scrape the eggs off of whatever they're pasted on.
I have one.
I have a couple I can hand out. But I think Penn State Ag Extension is more interested in educating than necessarily mitigating the problem. That's where the conservation districts comes in. And one of the things that they talked about was, there's a tree of heaven that is a species that, another invasive plant species, that these spotted lanternflies like to mate on, for lack of better terminology. Anyway, we could rip those out, and then that would, that would help the problem. But just having enough people to go in, identify these plants, and then rip them out is very difficult. There's other species of trees. We had this with the Emerald Ash Bore years ago with the ash trees, and we didn't mitigate that in time. But if we can be on the front end of this, put this on the national registry and start identifying it other places where the tree of heaven is, they could take, they could be a little proactive in removing that tree and introducing the species that are the natural predators. So that's one of the reasons why we want to put this on the national registry.
Thank you, Ms. Zarinsky. Yes?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, let's call for the vote.
Ms. Zarinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mr. Dietz.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Law.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner.
Yes.
And Mr. Warner.
Yes.
Passes by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Number 12. Consideration of Recognition of Nuclear Energy Plant Benefits Resolution. Mr. McGee.
Now therefore be it resolved by the Northampton County Council that the municipal body acknowledges the contribution that nuclear plants make to Pennsylvania's economy, the reliability of our electric grid, and the clean air we breathe, and the security of our nation, and such urge our elected leaders in Harrisburg to examine all the benefits that nuclear power brings to the Commonwealth and to consider appropriate action to recognize these benefits in our society. Be it further resolved that copies of this resolution be forwarded to our state senators and state representatives, and the General Assembly, and to the governor of Pennsylvania.
Thank you, Mr. McGee. Any discussion on this? Ms. Zarinsky.
I want to say that I am supporting this. I did a little research, and even the Union of Concerned Scientists, who are usually like a little anti-nuclear, are for this. And the reason is, is because when you assess the economic viability of nuclear power, it's necessary in our mix, not, not just because it is a low-carbon emission, but because the absence of nuclear energy would allow for future proliferation and extraction of natural gas, which would put more carbon emissions into the atmosphere. Methane is 86% more potent a greenhouse gas over a 20-year period than even CO2. And the recommendation of the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change says that we have to do everything that we can to make sure that the climate, that the, that the global temperature does, does not increase more than 1.5 degrees because, and to do that, we need to decrease our global net CO2 emissions by 45% from the 2010 measurements by 2030. Now, we can't do that if we start decommissioning all of these. There's five nuclear plants in Pennsylvania itself. Some of them are set to be decommissioned within the next 10 years because they're not economically viable. Exelon is one of the, one of the proponents of, owners of these. So if natural gas falls to the price where nuclear energy is not sufficient or, or economically viable, I guess the term is, then they will decommission these plants. And we cannot afford that when we are in a climate change crisis. So I would urge everybody to support Mr. McGee's resolution, and that we urge our state, federal, and governor to back this.
Thank you for that. Yeah, the capital's already in these plants. We just need a little bit more time so we can get to solar and wind, and that's one of the, one of the big pieces of this, of this resolution. So I thank you for co-sponsoring.
You're welcome.
And I encourage everybody to support it as well.
I think, if I'm not mistaken, a fair amount of Europe is under, has modernized the nuclear power. So I thought.
Yeah. But nuclear energy can be the bridge fuel that everybody wanted natural gas to be, but is not. We need nuclear energy so that we can ramp up renewables, solar, wind, and geothermal, because we're not there yet. In our renewable energy portfolio, we're supposed to be at 18% renewable energy. And if you look at the Energy Information Administration, we're woefully not meeting that goal by 2021. We are not going to meet that if we decommission these nuclear sites, because natural gas, we sit on the Marcellus Shale, and that natural gas is just going to be extracted. So we need this. So that's why I'm supporting it. Thank you. Sorry.
I hope Mr. McClure takes everything you said seriously from an administrative standpoint. All right. Is there any other discussion, or anyone has any other facts and figures?
I have four other pages of facts that I can deliver. Just let, you know.
I think you should consider doing a PowerPoint presentation in the future. Anybody on the phone that wants to chime in?
Yeah, Homer Simpson supports this, so I'll be supporting it.
Now, there's a fact for you.
Don't ever yell at me about nonsecretry. The Three-Eyed Fish supports it, too. Mr. Burns. Anyway, on my way here, with all the vehicles littered on William Penn Highway, one of them was an abandoned hybrid-electric plant-to-bus that was black, dark, and pushed off to the side. So I think we have to work on that a little bit. Having said that, let's call for the vote.
Mr. Dietz.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mr. Dietz.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Law.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Warner.
Yes.
And Ms. Zarinsky.
Yes.
Passes by a vote of nine to zero.
Okay. Excuse me. Consideration of Article 13 Contract Resolutions. First, we have the Clearwater Resolution. Let me get that. Apologize that I don't have it right in front of me at this point. Just rolling down the roll here. Thank you. All right. I'm going to do the whereas at the bottom. Whereas on November 5, 2018, the Northampton County Council received a request from the county executive for county council to adopt a resolution approving the contract in the amount of $104,300 with Seraphin Test Measure Division of, am I reading the wrong word?
Bump one.
Clearwater. You're right, Clearwater.
Sorry.
It's okay. She's amending her page. Okay. Sorry about that. Resolution, whereas on November 5, 2018, the Northampton County Council received a request from the county executive for county council to adopt a resolution endorsing a contract in the amount of $1,100,000 with Clearwater Construction Incorporated for replacement of Bridge 115 located in Bath, PA. Now therefore be it resolved that the Northampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendation of the county executive as set forth in the attached documentation to provide, to approve a contract with Clearwater Construction Incorporated. All right. That has been put out there, introduced. Discussion. Once again, this was discussed. Any further? All right, let's call for the vote.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Dietz.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Law.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Warner.
Yes.
Ms. Zarinsky.
Yes.
And Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Passes by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Now I know I am looking at Seraphin Test Measure, and we're going to go with that. Whereas on November 5, 2018, the Northampton County Council received a request from the county executive for county council to adopt, adopt the resolution approving a contract in the amount of $104,300 with Seraphin Test Measure Division of Pemberton Fabricators for Hybrid Calibration Equipment for Fuel Dispensing Units to be installed in county, provided F-450 chassis. Now therefore be it resolved that the Northampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendation of the county executive set forth in the attached documentation to approve contract with Seraphin Test Measure. Any discussion?
I don't even know what that is. It's a truck.
Yesterday, Mr. Durter gave us a great description. We're, it's getting a better situation for going out and doing our.
Oh, this is what the truck is called? Okay.
You can call anything you want. I don't think it's been named yet.
Yeah. Okay. Now I remember this. Very good.
No, I'm just, I mean, yeah, it's the back. We got the truck and, already, and now they're doing the back.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
No.
Ms., anybody on the phone? Ms. Zembow, please call, call for the vote.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferrari.
Herr Ferrari. Yes.
Mr. Law.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Warner.
Yes.
Ms. Zarinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
And Mr. Dietz.
Yes.
Passes by a vote of nine to zero.
All right, thank you, Ms. Zembow. Does anybody remember Larry Ferrari? I do. Is there any other new business to discuss? Ms. Zarinsky.
So I have received a notice of schedule for environmental review of the Adelphia Gateway Project. I have mentioned this a couple times, but I don't know what the county is doing with it. I don't think that we have yet to enter as interveners. But they have filed an application and are requesting a certificate of public convenience and necessity. So on January 23, 2018, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission issued a notice of application for the project. The issuance of the EA will be on January 4, 2019, and the 90-day federal authorization decision deadline is on April 4. I think there is still time for us to comment on this. Some of the background on this is that there is, it's proposed to acquire and convert portions of an 18-inch diameter pipeline that already exists, and part of that pipeline is already going through Northampton County. I believe that they are also going to add a compressor station, compressor stations again emit CO2 into the atmosphere and/or methane. And I think that we should address this as we address the PennEast Pipeline.
All right. I guess that's something you're going to think about for the new year and?
Well, I think we have to think about it a little bit before the new year because these deadlines are coming up.
All right.
So project stakeholders can express their objections on, they have a list of things here that are going to be addressed in the EA. Noise, safety, air quality, visual impacts, effects on the local community nearby properties, property rights. One of the things that I addressed when I gave my statement to them was the fact that this is a repurposed pipeline and that the, changing the flow without necessarily changing the pipe, the diameter or the gauge, could lead to leakage. That there are also points along this route that have already been identified as compromised. And I think that we need to be vigilant because this is going through our county. It's co-located in areas where there may already be a pipeline if the PennEast Pipeline goes through. It may be connected to the PennEast Pipeline in some places. And I think that we should gather more information on this as a county to understand what exactly its place is within our county and how it is going to impact everybody here.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice Chair?
Mr. Warner?
Yeah. Tara? Can you, can you hear me?
I can.
One of the things you might want to make a note of in your endeavor is to find, to find out if they have a catastrophic event emergency plan, which many of them are not doing.
Well, because this is an existing pipeline, I would think that they would already have to have one in place. But the question is, who pays for that emergency management? Is that also an expense that's going to be part of the county? Is that going to be our first responders going out there? Is that going to be something that the taxpayer needs to fund? And who's going to educate and alert our first responders and the people who are going to be the ones on-site to mitigate this? Because, I mean, a leak or an explosion could happen anywhere along a route. And when it does, it's, it is a catastrophic thing.
Okay. The reason I bring, listen, the reason I bring it up, the reason I bring it up is that that should be incorporated in those, those programs, those emergency programs. But also, they have different, different levels of pressures going through those lines that are never addressed. And it changes, it varies.
Yeah.
And the emergency management program, the crisis program or the catastrophic event programs that I've heard of do not address that. Just a thought. That's all.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Thanks. Do you have anything else?
No.
Okay. Is there any other new business? Seeing none. Council Committee Reports. Ms. Heffner?
We had the Human Services Meeting at the height of the snowstorm this evening. And several brave people came in to discuss their areas. Laurie Greco was here, who discussed areas on aging and their upgrades since the beginning of the year. And although we haven't gotten to green, we're 1.5% away from that. So I think she and her staff have done a phenomenal job in correcting all the areas of concern and really cleaning it up and putting a bright future ahead of us for that department.